First item on the agenda then, Dr. Cabral. Or do we have, is Mr. Twombly?
He is remotely present, yes. He may not be able to see us, but he should be able to hear us, and I believe we'll be able to hear him as well.
David, are you there?
He's coming.
Okay.
So, Mr. Twombly, as you'll see in your agenda, is going to present a series of contracts, three, to be specific. The first is for the, item number two is the Weston and Sampson contract for the wastewater treatment facility. Number three is the elevator corporation contract. And number four is the Brigham and Women's Athletic Trainer contract. So I will have Mr. Twombly present all three of those, answer any questions you have. We'll need a vote on those contracts if they are presented to your satisfaction. Mr. Twombly.
Okay, so, hi, everybody. I haven't seen you folks in a little bit. So I'll just start right in on it. So Weston and Sampson contract, this is really a contract extension. As you know, the contract with the DPW or with the town, so this is actually a good, good point to do thing. Because instead of us going out with bid and getting a contract on our own and getting a price, we're saddling up with the town. So there's two wastewater treatment plants, one that the town operates, one that we operate. So Weston and Sampson operates both, manages both wastewater treatment plants. So this is a extension for this contract. So for FY twenty-four, we were paying one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred, based on the increase using the CPA as of May two thousand twenty-four. Went up four percent. So for FY twenty-five, the management fee will be a hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. So we would be hoping for you to approve the contract extension with Weston and Sampson for FY twenty-five.
Okay. Do any committee members have any questions on the Weston and Sampson contract?
No.
Okay. Alrighty. Let's see, do we want to vote these separately?
Separately.
Separately, okay, alrighty. Would somebody then like to make a motion to approve the Weston and Sampson contract extension?
Wasman, so moved.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lewis, yes.
Right. Next one is motion elevator corporation contract. Mr. Twombly?
Okay, similar to Weston and Sampson, we schooled upon it and the town go out with bid for elevator maintenance. So basically, motion elevator, they would be winning a contract on this particular bid. We followed all the chapter thirty-three procurement regulations. We posted an advertisement in the con buys, in the newspaper, and we also posted it on our website. We did get three bids on this particular bid that we put out for the elevator maintenance. And again, motion elevator was the least expensive. So the annual cost for FY twenty-four, it's a three-year contract, but it stays the same. The annual cost would be twenty-four thousand and thirty dollars. But again, part of that would be paid by the town. I think they wanted to elevate it and get the number up.
Okay. Committee members, any questions or comments on motion elevator?
No.
Then would somebody like to make a motion to approve the motion elevator corporation contract for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, through twenty twenty-six, right? Or twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-seven. For July twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven.
So move, DeLuca.
Back to Wasman.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lewis, yes.
Thank you. And then the Mass General Brigham Athletic Trainer contract.
Okay, so as you may remember, we currently have Mass General Brigham as our athletic trainer. This past year, they were the trainers. So we went out to bid and we followed all the procurement regulations that we mentioned earlier. We posted it in newspaper, con buys, posted it on our website. But unfortunately, unfortunately, I guess you could say, we actually only got one bid, but it was from Mass General Brigham, which was our current vendor who does the athletic training services for athletic department. They are rated, it's a three-year contract, so their rate for the first year would be twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents per hour. Based on this sixteen hundred and fifteen hours that we included in the bid, it would be seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. But after talking to our athletic director, I believe we'll be well under that as far as hours. But I think we'll be between probably thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred hours. But this gives us the ability, for whatever reason, if we add additional sports or whatever, we can put a sixteen hundred and fifty out. So currently what we're paying for FY twenty-four, for comparison, we pay forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. And our cost is sixty-one thousand, five hundred. But again, that's only for thirteen hundred and fifty hours. Whereas this contract, when we got the bid, we put it out for sixteen hundred and fifty hours. Really, when you're doing a bid, you just have to be able to compare apples to apples. So some of the numbers are really just so that people have a way to submit a bid of it and make sure everybody's being evaluated at the same time. So I hope I answered all those questions, or if you have any questions for me?
Sure. So I just have some clarification on Form C. So the annual estimates that are in here, or the annual amounts that are in here, just to clarify, those are estimates based on sixteen hundred and fifty hours, but we are actually only billed for the number of hours that we incur? Or are those annual minimums?
Yeah, so you are absolutely hit the nail on the head. So the bid was out for sixteen hundred and fifty, but when we wrote up the contract, they're only going to bill us for what we use.
Okay.
So again, if we end up being well below sixteen, sixteen hundred hours or whatever, sixteen hundred and fifty hours, then we'll be billed for that. So that's a very good point.
Okay.
That basically captures exactly what I said.
Okay, okay.
Just a footnote to that, in our efforts to be as, excuse me, fiscal conscious as possible, I did do, I did do an inquiry with superintendents in my cohort and explored the possibility of getting a full-time equivalent athletic, excuse me, athletic trainer for Eastern Public Schools. After talking to them and after talking to the athletic director, Mary McDonald, we realized that the services provided were better for us in this way only because they are able to fulfill a substitute need if we have it. They have a bank of people to call upon if there are absences or vacations. If we had to have two people at two places at one time, obviously, one athletic director can't do that. So working with this, it would be a very minimal potential savings with a very reduced level of service, we believed. And so we decided to contract once again with. Now, Mr. Twombly had to search far and wide to find someone after our last company that was working with us decided not to bid any longer. And it was sketchy there for a little while, and we had some one-term, one-year contracts. So I'm very pleased and thank Mr. Twombly for his diligence in working with Brigham so successfully. And it brings me a lot of comfort to know that we have now a three-year contract to make sure that our students are safe and in good hands.
Great point.
And I'll just add, I would echo exactly what you should have said. The previous, we did hook up the bid live channel, if you remember this. But we had come out to bid, we had a three-year contract, and then the vendor pulled out at the last minute. We were kind of hunting around trying to get another vendor. Mass General Brigham stepped up and they've done a fantastic job. And like Cliche said, I think the other added advantage of having Mass General Brigham is that we have multiple sports going on, multiple games, like maybe a soccer and football game. You can have two athletic trainers, whereas if you had just hired one athletic trainer, you would only have one and it would have stuck. So this is a good deal.
Okay. Do any other committee members have questions?
I just, was this in our packet? I must have missed it, I didn't see it.
It was in any packet, I'm not sure.
It's not on the line. Yeah, it's not on the drive.
We'll make sure Lynn sends you a copy of that.
All right, thank you. And I have no questions, Jen, you have asked my question, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Twombly.
Yeah, Cabral.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Okay. Alrighty then. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Mass General Brigham contract for athletic trainer services for July of twenty twenty-four through June of twenty twenty-seven?
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Second, Wasman.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lewis, yes.
Okay. All right. Great.
Will you be staying on, Mr. Twombly?
Yeah, I'll stay, yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so Whitsons, next.
Andrea Stojewski, Director of Finance, is here to discuss the Whitsons Food Service Agreement Amendment going forward and answer your questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. The school committee has previously approved a three-year agreement with Whitsons, which ends in June of twenty twenty-five. The annual contract amendment before you tonight is required by DESI as part of our food service reporting compliance. Within your packets, there should be included a contract amendment, a chart of Whitsons projections, and DESI's contract amendment approval letter. DESI has already reviewed the amendment and its approved form. Notable items in the amendment include section two. Within this section, Whitsons has included an increase of four point six percent over the last contract amendment to match a particular CPI or Consumer Price Index for both their administrative and management fees. The overall year-over-year fee increase equates to about fifty-five hundred dollars. The next notable area is section three of the amendment. This includes a contract price guarantee with a deficit not to exceed two hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. The deficit represents overall food service estimated revenues versus the total cost of Whitsons operations. This value has been calculated by Whitsons with an amount that conservatively represents a deficit if the universal free schools meal program is unfunded. This amount is displayed in the second column of the Whitsons projection handout. We currently do not have enough funds in the school lunch revolving account to be able to cover the worst-case, I'm sorry, I apologize. We currently have enough funds in the school lunch revolving account to be able to cover this worst-case deficit if we have to. I do want to note that based off of history with the school lunch program, if this was not universally free and we have the need to charge students for consecutive fiscal years, this program would be unsustainable long-term. We do keep this in mind as we monitor the school lunch revolving account. At this point in time, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, one hundred and seventy million dollars in state appropriations for the universal free school meals has been included in the budget proposal, which is now with the governor for review and approval. I would like to note that the recommended amount to fully fund this program for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is one hundred and ninety million. This would represent a potential twenty million dollar deficit. We do not know what the shortfall impact will mean just yet for funding this next year's program. I'm going to take a chance to stop right now just to see if there are any questions or if there's anything I can walk through in the handouts related to the amendment.
Committee members, any, any questions? And I'll be honest, I always have questions because this makes, despite my finance background, the whole concept of how school lunch works makes no sense to me.
Don't apply logic.
No, not at all.
So yeah, maybe you could walk through the exhibit, because I'm sure I'm not the only one who's looking at this going.
Of, of course. Yes, so on an annual basis, we meet with Whitsons before we review the next year's contract. They are aware that this is a DESI requirement for approval. So what they walk us through is best-case scenario. If the universal free meals program is actually appropriated or fully funded by the state, what will that look like for us? So that's that very first column in the handout. Basically, Whitsons provides total revenue projections. If the state were to reimburse us for every student meal or every reimbursable meal between both state revenues and federal revenues that we qualify for. And then following that, they break down the cost of goods, so basically the cost of food, food inventory to run the program payroll. And this payroll number does include both Whitsons payroll and our internal payroll as well within this number. And then other miscellaneous operating expenses, that administrative fee that I called out in the contract of the eighty-three thousand and change, the management fee of the forty-two thousand, to get to a total cost of operations of about one point seven million. What I do want to note when reviewing what Whitsons provided, I believe they have a typo in this handout. The payroll would not change between the universal free program and then the other different scenarios. I believe that number should be nine hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars, which would actually net right where we want to be at break even for the universal free program.
If it's fully funded.
Yes, a hundred percent, if it's fully funded.
So I just want to call out once more what Andrea already called out, is that it is not fully funded by the state right now in their current iteration of the budget. And so while we may potentially break even on paper, until that is fully funded or until we get further information on how that's going to affect Easton or whether the state will subsidize that in some other way, we will have a deficit even with the universal lunch. We do have, as Andrea stated, we do have enough in the revolving account right now. The revolving account being the account that when students purchase items, it goes into that. And then, of course, we pay for the lunch program with it. Those are the only things that go in other than revenue, like from the federal and state government, and those are the only things that go out. It's only four things to service the food service program. Again, to just highlight, well, I think what she was just going to say is if you look at the next three columns, this is if we don't have universal lunch and we don't increase our current prices, we would have a two hundred and ninety-five thousand-plus deficit projected. The next column is if we add twenty-five cents to both breakfast and lunch, that would be reduced to a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar deficit if we don't have free lunch at all and breakfast. And the third column is if we increase breakfast by twenty-five cents and lunch by fifty cents, that would be further reduced to a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The reason I'll call that out, and I apologize for taking that piece over, is because what we don't also want is to have universal free lunch for a couple of years as that number needs to increase to reduce the deficit so that we come to a point where it isn't funded at some point and we have to add a dollar or a dollar fifty. So we do like to let people know far in advance of that. So I am going to recommend that this winter, we take a look at increasing those prices, even though we currently have universal free breakfast and lunch, and we'll have to explain this clearly to parents so that they don't think that this means they do have to pay. But we want to continue with incremental increases so that if we get to a point that we don't have it, we don't go to a potentially three, four, or five hundred thousand dollar deficit in a couple of years. So we will be on top of that this winter. We will come before you with some suggested increases. It may be slightly higher than what is here now, only because we're projecting for the future. And as you know, costs for food for everyone are really escalating. So just so that you know, that conversation will be coming. So when it looks really incongruous that we would be talking about lunch prices when we supposedly have free and reduced lunch, uh, free and free lunch and breakfast, that would be the reason why, so we need to stay on top of that.
Okay. So with the, with the state, you know, who knows, right? What will get signed and then how the, how the funding will work out. But it's, it's coming in at a little less than ten percent under, right? What was recommended. So if we were to apply that ten percent, we would be looking at, what, around a hundred seventy thousand, right?
Totally, yeah.
And what's our, what do we have in the revolving account now?
So I believe, I have the number ready. We have some outstanding bills that need to be paid, but the estimate for closing fiscal year twenty twenty-four is seven hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, all right.
We did recently have an audit with USDA, and in it, we discussed with them the opportunity to purchase some equipment for some of our older buildings. Again, because it's for the food service program, it qualifies. So we have to go through DESI to get approval when we do it, if it's over a certain threshold. But we will be doing that to try, again, to stay ahead of our needs in those buildings. What we don't need is for a very integral piece of equipment to break down and then the lead time on getting it. Or we don't want the escalation of cost either. Right, those are going up every year too. So we're staying on top of that. Linda St. Hilaire, who is the director of the food service program, is working with Andrea to come up with a five-year capital plan. So we are going to be doing that procurement plan on an annual basis, taking a piece out of it. It won't be coming from this. But no, while seven hundred thousand sounds like a lot of money, if we have a two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar deficit and some major pieces of equipment, that goes away very quickly. Certainly within a couple of years. So we are cautious about that. We've been very diligent with making sure that we are spending frugally out of that. But we do have to keep that in mind, even though it looks like a large number. We don't want to have a turnaround where we have to come up with three hundred thousand for the operating budget. That would be very, very detrimental to our operations.
So with the, and I tried to read through, you know, our, our mask and any SS takes on the state budget. So can they, my answer, they can basically say, right? We're funding universal free lunch, but if they're only giving us ninety-ish percent of the actual costs, what does that do to districts? We just need to make it up, still offer the whole free lunch program and just make it up?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And it's possible that.
So reality could be somewhere between column one and column two.
Correct.
Gotcha, all right.
And it's not, unfortunately, unusual with DESI. Circuit breaker, transportation, all of those things, the legislation calls for one hundred percent funding, but we hover around seventy percent on circuit breaker, for example, and it's different for transportation. So all of that legislation says, as funding is available. And so while we're very thankful to have it and we hope it continues, it's a great service for students that is very needed, we, it is very important for the public to know that free, universal breakfast and lunch isn't exactly free for the school department.
Gotcha, yeah.
Necessarily.
Yeah. All right. School committee members, sorry too for dominating the questions you have. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Andrea, that was very informative.
I do have a question. And I'm not suggesting that, that I'm recommending we do this, but I, I just, for clarification, if the legislation states that until funding is available, why couldn't we charge for the difference?
Well, it would be difficult to determine which students you're going to charge and how much you're going to charge. It would have to be a completely different pay scale. And under the regulations, not even a hundred percent positive, we can charge. So we'll have to check into that. We certainly can't make a profit on it, so it would only be the difference. If we could do it, it would only be that potentially ten percent difference between what we're given and what we aren't. I do know that this is really top legislative priority for many people in our delegation. And so I am hoping, maybe naively, that even if the funding is not coming from the universal program from the government, that there will be some other way that the state will try to subsidize this. So we have to be cautious that we're not too quick to charge for something that may be reimbursed that would be problematic, if it's even allowable in the regulations, which we will follow up on that. It's a great question.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, so it's definitely an evolving area, right?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Okay.
Nope, I think it's very clear.
Jackie, any questions or comments before we move this to a vote?
No, thank you.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the Whitsons Food Service Agreement Amendment? And the period for this is for July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Lewis, so moved.
Can we get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lewis, yes.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next upon the agenda, we have a couple of retirements. So first one is a Blanch Ames Paraprofessional. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Catherine Conley, who unfortunately is unable to join us this evening, is a paraprofessional. She's currently at Blanch Ames, or she just finished at Blanch Ames. She began her career with EPS in March of two thousand and seven as a para at Parkview School. She was then transferred to Moreau Hall in twenty twenty-one and then, of course, moved over to the Blanch Ames Elementary School when it opened. She will be, she did retire. I keep thinking we're still in school, so we're here every day. She did retire in June after seventeen years with the district. She retired on June twelfth, which was the last day of school. She was a phenomenal paraprofessional. I just hope you don't ma, add my, mind my editorial.
Please, no.
Before you consider this for about, extremely knowledgeable, very committed, kind, very sweet. And since the last twelve of her years were pre-K, I'm sure you can imagine extremely patient as well. Always fun watching her interact with children in the classroom. And once again, very sad to see such a tremendous amount of experience leaving, but wish her all the best in her very well-deserved retirement.
I will read her letter. Dear Leisha Cabral, I'm writing to let you know that after eighteen years as an elementary school paraprofessional, I will be retiring on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, the last day of this school year. I started my years at Parkview, the elementary school I went to as a child, moved to Moreau for two years, and ended here at Blanch Ames. I was hired as a one-to-one, then moved to PINC for five years and spent the last twelve with preschool. It has been a great honor and privilege to work with these children and form relationships with them. I always prided myself in the special bonds I made with many of these children, especially the ones who, that needed extra help and love, and I will leave knowing that I always gave two hundred percent. Thanks to you, thanks to all the staff through the years for all of your kindness and support. Best regards, Catherine D. Conley. Any school committee comments?
Congratulations, you're going to love retirement.
Any other, any other school committee comments? All right, well, I hope you are enjoying retirement already. You are quite a few weeks into it, and thank you for all that you did for Eastern Public Schools and enjoy your retirement. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the retirement of Catherine Conley. Can I get a second? With regret, can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lewis, yes.
All right. And next up?
Next up is Mr. David Twombly, Director of Operations, who you heard from earlier this evening. David began his career with Eastern Public Schools in January two thousand and ten. After fourteen years, he plans to retire tomorrow. And he's here this evening late with us, indicative of his commitment to this district for such a long time. His legacy will remain, the beautiful Blanch Ames Elementary School, something that he, I'm sure, did not consider would be such a big part of his last few years here. He's been a huge part of the central office staff and executive team for all of this time. And just so privileged and happy to have been able to work alongside him for our many projects. He also oversaw, of course, the courts projects, the playground projects. Currently was, has been working on the security project. So all those things that happen behind the scenes and you wonder how they just show up one day looking so nice and shiny. Well, there you are, it's all that hard work behind the scenes with that. So I want to, once again, personally and professionally, thank Mr. Twombly for his service to the children and the staff at the Eastern Public Schools. And congratulate him in his retirement, wish you many, many, many happy and healthy years.
Whew, all right. So I'm going to read the letter, which I've practiced multiple times so that I don't get verklempt, but we'll see. Okay. So, dear Jen, this is my official notification to you and the school committee that my last day of work at the Eastern Public Schools will be Friday, July sixth, twenty twenty, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. On that day, I plan to retire. I am excited about my impending retirement, but wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for all of the opportunities and support that I have experienced working for Eastern Public Schools for the past fifteen years. During my time in Easton, we've completed a number of projects. Most recently, the new Blanch Ames Elementary School, the new tennis, basketball, and pickleball courts at Oliver Ames High School, the renovation of the North and South Playground at the Richardson Olmsted School, and numerous other improvements and upgrades to the schools. the renovation of the north and south playground at the Richardson Olmsted School, and numerous other improvements and upgrades to the schools. I have enjoyed working at the Eastern Public Schools and will miss my coworkers and my working relationships with the Department of Public Works and Town Hall. Please contact me if you need any additional information or if I can provide any assistance during this transition. Sincerely, David Twombly. Alright, so.
Do you wanna go first?
Um, I'll go last.
I'll go first. So thank you, David, and congratulations. I I think a lot of people are going to miss you because you're involved in everything. I don't think that you will miss those first day of school phone calls, where's the bus?
Don't be a snow days.
I was one of those, those great aunts that called, where's the bus? We've been waiting here for an hour. Um, anyway, it was good to work with you on all the committees and um I know you're going to enjoy, you're going to love retirement, if that's what you're really gonna do. I have a feeling you're going somewhere. So anyway, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Can't picture sitting, him sitting still.
Nope.
Uh, Jackie or Lauren?
Sure, I'll go. David, um I'm sorry my video isn't on tonight, but I have enjoyed working with you these past nine years. You're always a joy to be around and to work with. You're very easy to work with. I feel like we had a really good relationship. I love taking the tours of Blanche Ames with you. It was always fun and exciting to see the school develop around us. And um I thank you for all your hard work over the years and your friendship, and I will definitely miss you and I look forward to keeping in touch with you. And congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, I enjoyed working with you and like you said, enjoying all those tours of the Blanche Ames School, they have uh some really good discussions, not just about the Blanche Ames School, but just in life in general, talk about school community that, you know, on on the school community in Hall, do a sheer different idea. It was really nice, it's like a, wasn't like pure coworker, it's like
Definitely, thanks.
Lauren, do you have any, any comments or well wishes? Not to put you on the spot.
What? Uh, that's okay. Uh, congratulations, David. Um, I appreciate everything that you've done for the district and the students and everything. I'll personally miss seeing you and I go visit Blanche Ames and and you pop in the office around the corner. Um, it was always, you're always a friendly, friendly face and um and I'll miss, I'll miss that. So I hope you enjoy doing whatever it is that you'll be doing um and keep in touch.
Thanks, Lauren.
I'll see you in Virginia too.
So um I I hope that we see you maybe at like an M A S C event, come to the conference in the fall. So I I hope this is just until I see you again and and not, and not farewell. Um, I just, I'm going to really miss um how upbeat you've always been. And no matter, you are unflappable and no matter what was happening, you could handle it quickly with a smile. It, the, the world was never ending, the sky was never falling. Even if it was, um you, you always made us feel like it wasn't. So that definitely was, it was a very nice, you've always been such a nice counterbalance to what can be, you know, some very difficult, stressful situations and times, and I very much appreciate that. And I was thinking of you last night, um actually as I was driving through the school campus, I I had to drop something off and and I took a little tour. And it was so neat to see people playing basketball, pickleball, tennis, people walking their dogs. There were kids playing at R O, there were kids playing at Blanche Ames, like this whole campus was alive on a summer night and um that is thanks in no small part to all of the projects that you have helped steer us through with just tremendous attention to detail and project management. And um I'm just very grateful that you were here for all of that and you, um, you know, your, your handprint is all over this district, so forever. So thank you for that. We'll miss you.
Yeah, thank you for all those kind words. Uh, there's an old saying, uh, there's no I M T. So that's what I pretty much live like. It wasn't just me doing all those projects. Certainly, you know, under Alicia's leadership, uh she's had a tremendous job pushing me uh in the right direction and trying to get some of these projects done, whether it's through going to town meeting to get the funding, or the uh T P A to get the funding for the fields. Also, uh, we have tremendous uh working relationship with the D P W. I always talk about uh the D P W. You guys have a great situation here in Houston, where the D P W works alongside with the school department, those towns. And uh I'm lucky enough to have such such tremendous workers that are committed to the town. Uh, and as an administrator, um, you know, you always want, when you come into a district or you come into a new job, you always wanna leave it in better shape. And I feel like uh I pretty much have left the school and I'm in much better shape than I arrived. And like we were talking about earlier, uh I think again, under Alicia's uh leadership uh a lot of different people, whether it's school committee and even the tax payers of Houston. Uh, we transformed that school campus, that school campus that we have, uh at some point, some architectural magazine, landscape architectural magazine, gonna have that on the front page because that campus, it's, it's like a college campus, it's, it's really beautiful. Blanche Ames obviously would be anchored to that, but uh the last several years, I mean, the people in Houston should be proud and should be happy. They have beautiful uh facilities over there. Uh, they kept up, uh fields are beautiful. We have all kinds of youth sports that go on, schedule over there. Use all the fields, it's just unbelievable how much that uh, that whole complex, that whole area is distinct. Even some of the new fields I put in a few years ago, we got C P A money, put fields in the back towards uh where the softball field is and football practice field. I mean, we just did so many, that doesn't even include all the mechanical systems, roofs that we put on over in the middle school.
Things that people don't see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like so many things, but I can't say enough, I've enjoyed working with everybody. I I really enjoyed working with Alicia, she's a great leader. Um, she's been doing a great job, her and Chrissy. I really enjoyed this past year. Alicia probably heard this like three or four times, but I really enjoyed this past year working over at Blanche Ames. With Sam and Karen, all the whole crew of it. Erin, probably gonna be something's name. Teachers over there were so warm. I gotta really miss that, that was good, was interesting to see all the dismissal and Eric. I haven't worked in a school before, but see all the dismissals and the number of lunches and you know, it's like organized chaos, getting all those kids on the buses. But we have a group, it's such order. Everybody works together, everybody has a smile on their face and really, you could be working, you know, sometimes you get down, you kinda like, oh wow, this is tough. But we have a good school system here, and you guys have a school committee with the leaders, you should be proud of it. You guys are the leaders, just like Alicia, you work as a team, you've got a great job. For that, I will stop talking.
Thank you. Well, let us, let us, let us take our final votes and uh and and don't be a stranger, please. Um, alrighty, so uh I will make a motion to accept the retirement of Director of Operations, David Twombly, with regrets. Can I get a second?
Wasn't second with regret.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasn't yes.
Star, yes? Alright. Alrighty, hi.
Congrats, David.
Congrats.
Congrats, David.
See you later.
See you, I may as well see you in November.
Yes. See you in November.
November, yeah.
Alright, come to the conference. Alright, okay. Uh, so next up on the agenda, we have um a vote to approve um another series of contracts. So this is, we're going with just I X L?
So we do have, you have a list of six academic contracts here. However, because Mrs. Pruitt isn't here, she is participating in um her doctoral program project right now. Uh, I, we would prefer to have her speak to them and answer any questions that you might have. The one that is really the most timely that we would ask you to consider this evening is just the last one for I X L learning. I do wanna highlight for you a couple of things. Uh, I asked Lynn to forward you a a little chart there about the programs that we're gonna be replacing with I X L. I think this is important to point out because you can see that we have four programs for both math and E L A that we were using at different schools. And now I X L, math and reading, is going to replace all of them. Not only is that a savings of over a thousand dollars, almost twelve hundred dollars, but you can imagine the effi- efficiencies i- in addition to the cost efficiency. So students will have one login, teachers will have one login. And in in terms of the experience of the students, these programs, as you can see from the chart, go from Blanche Ames through R O and E M S. Now students will have the consistency of the programming through all of those as well. This is uh a direct result of the teamwork of Chrissy and the um Director of Curriculum, Anne Weintraub, and also Livia Ramos, the I T Director. We talk a lot about the efficiencies that she is able as the Director of I T to bring to the table and you can imagine that with all of the programs we have in the district, being able to scratch off a thousand, two thousand, three thousand dollars each really adds up. And it allows us to not only provide better programming for the students and a better experience for them, their families and the teachers, but there's the cost savings as well. And so we're very thankful for that partnership. They're doing a great job. This is one small example, but I just wanted to highlight it as an example. The S E A program, our summer school program, actually used I X L today. The very small littles used it, no issues at all. It went perfectly fine. It was their very first time using it ever. And um they used a diagnostic that assesses their math skills and identifies the exact standards that the teachers can focus on for the individual children next week as they go forward in the program. So it's extremely beneficial, it's helpful, it's a better product for us and our needs right now. It's an easier login system, it's a better experience for the children as they move through the grades, and it's less expensive. So it's like a win-win all around. But I wanna give a shout out where it's due and it's to um the group that work together on not only this, but all of our programs, making sure that we're streamlining them and creating a better experience at the same time.
Alrighty, so we have the um, we have the pricing in front of us and this is a one-year contract. Um, I did have a, I had a question about um uh, what opportunities will the staff have to learn and transition to this new program off of the ones that they may be familiar with?
Yes, they are uh going to have training. Um, Livia Ramos is going to be setting up training for them when they return to school. It was a little bit before we left school.
Okay.
But that's going to continue and um she's sending out some tutorials as well for people that wanna get a jump started.
Okay, any uh school committee members, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, alright, then um I will, I'll make, I'm first gonna make a motion just so that we can have it in the minutes and avoid any confusion as to what happened with these other ones. I'm gonna make a motion to um to postpone approving Great Minds, Wilson, No Adam, Bridges and Renaissance to a future meeting. Can I get a second on that?
Wasn't second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasn't yes.
Star, yes? Okay, great.
And just to be clear, those are programs we are currently using, we're gonna, we, we want to continue using. We're tabling them just so that Mrs. Pruitt can present them when she returns. In a way to be concerned.
Um, alright, and then uh would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the contract for I X L learning for uh July twenty twenty-four through July third of twenty twenty-five?
Wasn't so moved.
Can we get a second?
Second, please.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasn't yes.
Star, yes?
Oh, Louis, yes.
Quite alright. Okay, um, next up, we have the schedule of payments. So since the school committee last meets, last met, excuse me, uh, this, we have approved, first, there were three payroll subsidiary warrants, so these are um these are delegated to the chair to approve, so that was zero zero one S, zero zero five S and zero zero seven S. And then um the committee as a whole approved zero ninety-three S, zero ninety-six S, zero ninety-seven S and zero ninety-nine S, and those were all for ru- routine operating expenses. Then we have um three that are making their way through the system um of approval. So at the next meeting, we should have one hundred, one oh one and one oh two approved unless there are any questions that arise out of any of those. Okay. Um, let's see, so next on the agenda was the student representative to the school committee update, and we are going to strike that this week because our, our um student rep is on vacation. And let's see, so next up is public comments, and I'm not seeing any for tonight. So superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. A couple of things. I did recently attend the M A S, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Conference with our Director of D E I A, our Director of Finance and our Director of H R. There were a great number of presentations on finance, D E I A, human resources, as well as a lot of wonderful workshops on equity and uh finance, of course, as always, legal issues, of course, as always. So once again, uh M A S just did a great job of really hearing what our concerns were, hearing what the new trends and legal issues are coming up and changing and provided us with some great resources for professional development. It was a great learning experience. The networking and the connections are always very important too. These singleton jobs that all four of us have in our district, uh, we support one another, but we are singletons in the district in our roles. So it's always, it's very helpful to have that network to call upon. When you have questions, we'll be looking for new ideas and thought partners who are experts in the area, so that was a great opportunity, especially for some of our newer staff, to be able to meet colleagues throughout the Commonwealth that they hadn't met before. So that was wonderful. I do wanna note that Carols Perez, the D E I A Director, is hosting this summer a series of cafecitos and conversation, coffee and talking. So they are meet and greets, opportunities to ask questions, to give feedback, make comments for her. They've been really successful so far. People have given us some great feedback. The, they had, there was one at the Ames Library, for example. Um, there was one at Town Hall. The next one is actually tomorrow at ten A M in the teen room upstairs at the Y M C A. There's no registration necessary or anything, you can just show up and she would be very happy to, even if you just introduce yourself, listen in on some of the conversation, she'd be delighted to meet whoever can attend. So please take her up on that and if you wanna look for future opportunities for cafecitos and conversation, please check her webpage, which is a link off of our district webpage, and they're all on there. And I had been asked by the school committee, I first of all had asked the school committee to give us some latitude in hiring for specialized positions only, very hard to fill positions, whether they are in um our programs, our specialized programs, or whether it is a uh support staff person or um a therapeutic position, things that are very difficult for us to fill and being able to hire them over step seven with reporting back to you on the progress of that. We've made many hires actually so far uh in the district, whether they are support people or parents or classroom teachers. We've only had two that we've given, given consideration past step seven. Those two are again in specialized services, very hard to fill positions, positions that we needed some stability in and we needed people who had experience. One of them was hired at step fourteen and one of them was hired at step eight. We're very fortunate and feel very fortunate that they both accepted. We're excited to get them started and uh everyone else that we've hired so far has been under step seven, actually considerably under step seven. So we are seeing sort of an uptick in the number of students that are actually graduating again from teacher preparation programs. I wouldn't say it's a plethora and it's really robust, but we're, we're definitely seeing a difference, which is great for our pipeline of educators. Uh, and so we're, once again, very excited. It's an exciting time of year, especially if somebody spent a year or two years somewhere else and then they come to Easton. They always come and meet with the Director of H R and myself. They always come and meet with the Director of H R and myself after they've worked up, gone to the school and met with a panel. And if they're a classroom teacher, for example, they do a sample lesson. And no matter which school they go to, they always come very excited at their interaction with the staff, but also with the students. We do pull students together in the summer as well for for sample lessons, and they're always thrilled with their interactions and very excited to come and join us. So that's a very uplifting to see when someone with an outside lens comes in and reminds us of how special our our staff and our students are. And so we've been really successful in that regard and and been able to keep those costs at bay so far. So uh, uh, unless you want to limit that, I would just ask for your continued consideration in that. If it is something where I feel it is getting unreasonable, we've had over a dozen hires or more already, and it's only those, I would say dozens actually, and it's only those two. So um, as long as you agree that that is reasonable and only for those high need areas, then we'll continue that. I do feel we would have lost uh, those candidates if we had to wait for a meeting. So it's definitely a marked difference in being able to not have to pass over experienced people and potentially lose two, three of them. And uh, so it's going really well and I thank you for your support.
Okay, great.
And that's all I have.
Okay, alrighty, um, so we do not have Mrs. Pruitt here tonight for the assistant superintendent notes, so school committee notes, Nancy?
Okay, first off, um, just um, in our thoughts, uh, Mr. Bill Nixon, who was a teacher at Oliver Ames High School for many years, a coach, and the gym is named after him, and also at the Easton Middle School, uh, teacher that recently, well, yeah, recently retired, I'd say, uh, Joey and Smith Nolan. So condolences to their families. Uh, Saturday, this Saturday, July twenty seventh, at the Holy Cross Center, which is on one thirty eight Washington Street, is a stronger together event in honor of Lindley, um, who was a fourth grader when um, she passed. Um, there's a P M C training ride, a one more, a one point two mile kids bike ride, family fun, music, lawn game, space painting. Uh, there's four or five food trucks that will be there. I believe it starts at eight, but it could be nine, I'm not sure. I think it's eight to uh, two o'clock, and that's this Saturday. And in the last couple of weeks, uh, the school committee has attended the uh, select board meetings to uh, set up committee members for the new P A S E committee, which you're calling P A S, but Pace, are you, oh, that's what it is, you're calling it Pace?
Yes.
But there's no C, I don't know, it's kind of weird, so anyway. Um, so uh, it was, it was very difficult. We had to choose six members and um, we, I believe there were fifteen applicants or fourteen.
Yep.
So it was very difficult for us to choose uh, people to be on that committee 'cause every single one of them would have been great on the committee. So thank you to those people that got um, elected to that committee.
Okay, that's all, okay. Jackie, do you have anything this week?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Lauren, any updates this week?
I do not have any updates. I hope everyone is enjoying their summer.
Okay, great, and uh, yeah, I think Pace was the only, the only um, thing I had on my list, so I don't have anything for this week.
I saved it for you, sorry.
No, that's quite alright, quite alright. Um, alrighty, so that's it for school committee notes. So with that, I will um, make a motion to go into executive session. Before I do that, I just want to point out um, that on the agenda for executive session, there was um, some language about discussing a retainer agreement, and I just want to point out that um, that will not be part of our executive session. So um, so the motion then is uh, make a motion to enter executive session to return to open session pursuant to M G L Chapter thirty A subsection twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Eastern Educators Association paraprofessional unit and pursuant to M G L Chapter thirty A subsection twenty one A seven to comply with open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive sessions from May sixth, May twenty third and May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
To Luca, second.
Roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Wilson, yes.
Star, yes?
Luca, yes.
Okay, alright, so we will return shortly. And do we have Jackie and Lauren back online?
Yep. And Jackie.
Okay, great. Hate that always. Alrighty, so next up on the agenda is, let's see, a discussion and vote to approve the Stoneman Chandler and Miller LLP retainer agreement. Dr. Cabral.
So the school department has been represented by Stoneman Chandler and Miller for literally decades, three decades.
At least.
At least. And the service they provide is tremendous. The historical knowledge they have has been very useful to me, even in my second decade. And they have all of the historical knowledge before that. So this contract is to extend. It's just our last contract has, is expiring. And so this is just to extend that contract. I had already described in a prior meeting the details of the contract. The only difference is that instead of us pay, we do have a retainer, but instead of us paying the hourly rate after we hit a ninety thousand dollar threshold, we're going to pay the hourly rate after we hit a one hundred thousand dollar threshold. And that is the only difference in this draft. And if you had any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is a one-year contract from, would be retroactive for July first to June thirtieth in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from school committee members? No?
No, I think the institutional knowledge they bring is very, very important.
Absolutely, yep. Okay. All right then, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Stoneman Chandler and Miller retainer agreement?
Wyson, some votes.
And can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes? Is Lauren on? Shoot.
Yeah, she's there.
Okay.
She's muted.
Okay.
Lauren, you're muted.
Lauren, can you unmute so we can capture your, your vote? All right, well, that is a majority, so I think we can move on then to the next item on the agenda. But before we do, let me just, let's see. Okay. Lynn, can you make sure that she's moved over as a, as a panelist? Okay.
She said she needs to be moved over. As a panelist perhaps?
Oh, put her off.
No.
Okay, because I could see her in the attendees. I mean, in the panelists.
Oh, okay.
Oh, now she's a twice.
Lauren, can you hear us now?
Now I can.
Okay, and we can.
I can hear you before.
Okay, and we can hear you.
Okay, so we don't have to do that again, that's great.
Okay, alrighty, alright. So, um, alright, so you heard the vote. I, do you agree with the vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is minutes. So we will begin with the regular school committee meeting minutes from June twentieth. All right, so. So Dr. Cabral had provided the regular school committee, I think you forgot the exact session from the twentieth.
I do, oh, I was doing that again. I didn't know you wanted me to.
Oh, okay. So this was, so the, so you had made, there was a noted edit, right? That you had provided.
Yes, I gave it to Lynn.
Okay, okay, and that was under the, the retainer agreement section? Okay, alrighty. Do any other committee members have any questions, comments, or edits from the June twentieth regular session minutes? I had one for, at the top of the second page, just a spelling of the, of Richardson Olmstead. It was, it's Helen, H-E-L-L-E-N, not Patricia.
Not Alan.
Oh, Helen?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any other? Edits, questions, comments? All right, um, I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes with noted edits for June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yeah.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
Great. Next up are the regular meeting minutes from. Uh, well, the joint, the joint minutes between the, the minutes for the joint meeting, between the select board and the school committee, from Monday, June twenty-fourth. Any questions, comments, or edits on these? Okay. Um, can I get a motion then to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So move to Luca.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
Okay. Executive session minutes, let's begin with May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the executive session workshop meeting minutes from Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, but not release at this time. Can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes, and it's the twenty-third. Right?
No.
No, that was May sixth.
May sixth.
There is one for the twenty-third as well.
Yep. And the twenty-eighth and June twentieth. We have four executive sessions.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Um, let's see, so next up are executive session minutes from May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so we had discussed these in our executive session this evening and provided some noted edits. So I make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from May twenty-third with noted edits and to, um, release after the edits are made. Can I get a second?
Wyson's second.
Okay, roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yeah.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
Okay. And next up are executive session minutes from May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to approve and release these minutes. Can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
Okay, great, alrighty. And then, uh, finally, we have executive session meeting minutes from June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. So, um, this is the first time we have seen these. So if, uh, first, does anybody have, um, any questions, comments, or edits that they would like to discuss in a future executive session? Okay, not hearing any? All right. So with that, then I make a motion to approve but not release at this time the executive session meeting minutes from June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Wyson's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
All right, great. So our next meeting is, let's see, August, Thursday, uh, August twenty-second at six P M here in the Simmons Lecture Hall and online. Um, and so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wyson, yes.
Star, yes?
Moon is yes.
All right, have a good night, everybody. Thanks for joining.
Good night.
Good night.